Third edition of your beloved planning board. I remind you that this meeting is being broadcast when recorded or rebroadcast on Westford Cat. We'll start with the board, anything for open forum?
Nope.
Nope. Staff?
Just if you could, anybody who's looking to go to annual town meeting, if you could participate in the survey we have going on, just to help with planning purposes. Town meeting will be March 22nd at 9:00 AM at Westford Academy. So, I want to mark your calendars, I believe they'll start checking in people at 8:00 AM. If you prefer getting here a little early, but survey would help and just for planning purposes. So, March 22nd, 9:00 AM, Westford Academy, I know the moderator's here as well, I don't know if you want to add anything. I'm not, it's fine.
It's probably important to note that that's one hour earlier than is typical for Saturday town meetings.
We've been doing it at 9:00 AM, but just to further encourage people, there's going to be coffee in the morning and a pasta bar lunch for lunchtime.
Great. I'll go to the audience, anybody have anything for? All right, seeing none, we have a continued public hearing, PB 2501, the amended zoning bylaw for the floodplain overlay district. Gentlemen.
Sure, so we included a couple of things in your packet, so we had the draft bylaw again reviewed from the floodplain management specialist, Nadia Madden at DCR. You'll notice in here, the bylaw is currently would classify as compliant and everything, each section of bylaw either meets requirements or is not applicable to Westford. Because of what resources are and are not here. So, just something that I thought was handy to, for everybody to be able to see that we would be compliant, meet all requirements. She provided her comments to the few questions we had, quote, based on your last meeting. The one item that's out there, and this is totally optional for you all, is whether you're going to include the definitions of the zones that are here in Westford. So, in the, I guess, kind of quote-unquote cleaner version of the bylaw, we just have it in red at the end. Nadia said that we should use the definitions from the model bylaw language that they put together. So, that's what those three definitions are of zone A, zone AE, and zone X. Cold verbiage over there. And then, based on your report recommendation, whether you want to keep the definitions in or not, there's just some elements in there that note the changes of the definition section. And that is just there to provide a little clarity. So, in red, could either stay, if you'd like it to stay, or come out if you'd like to come out. That's pretty much it, we haven't received any public comments in our office. Otherwise, just turn back with the board, see if you have any follow-up questions.
All right, so why don't we go to the board for general discussion, and we can discuss the definitions, Bob, do you have anything generally on this?
No, and one minor thing I happened to just catch, and that is, on the historic structure of local. That is not something that we would deem to be, what was it, deeming protection. It actually has to be on an historic register, is that correct, Joe?
Good question, I'm sure.
So, I don't have a hard answer for you right now, but in general, while we have some historic districts, unless they are registered, either on the state level, or there's a restriction of some kind, it isn't binding in terms of what we do here for local permitting. But I do think there are allowances when reviewing floodplain applications to allow for flexibility if there is what is deemed an historic structure. So, we can certainly try to gather some information before town meeting in case this question comes up, but.
Because I think that's what, I think it's a rolling 75-year or older?
That's our demolition delay bylaw.
Demolition delay bylaw for historic.
Eight-five years, I believe, which is something.
I wonder if that would apply here.
So, while not zoning, it's the general bylaw, our demolition delay just means that if the structure's been there for 85 or more years, it's subject to the demolition delay bylaw, which starts a process.
But it wouldn't be, fall under any purview of this consideration.
I think that's an independent review process.
Thanks, that's it.
Okay. Johnny?
No, nothing, thanks.
Dylan?
No.
Darren?
No.
All right, definitions, do we want to keep them in? I think they're a good idea to keep them in, Bob?
I do.
I agree.
Yep. All right, I'll go to the public.
We can vote, I'll vote.
Well, when we can vote, we'll be voted off. Close the public hearing. For the public, anybody have anything to discuss on this? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Say aye.
All those in favor say aye.
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 A motion to approved the bylaw as written, adding in the definitions.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we want a motion to approve this, to recommend this to town meeting, or we'll do that at the end?
So, I guess we're looking for, first of all, a vote for your report and recommendations, which really would in turn be your recommendation to town meeting, it includes your capture vote.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the report and recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else on that, Jeff?
That's it, right, Joe?
Yeah, should be it.
All right, first item for general business, PB 1923, Wendell Place, it's for Waterman.
Good evening, Matt Waterman, representing Toll Brothers, for the record. We're here for the Wendell Place subdivision on Nutting Road, this is more of a housekeeping item. We've been working with Toll Brothers and the Board of Health to update a couple of lots with their current house footprints and layouts. And in turn, it affected the lots that are subject to aggregate nitrogen loading, which was tied into some of the language that was included in the planning board's covenant. So, we're here tonight simply to have the board update the covenant to clarify these changes as approved by the Board of Health. There's Board of Health restrictions on lots, previously on lots 14, 15, 16, and 18, those are lots that have septic systems within the zone two, that kind of circumvents the property on the easterly side, and then actually across the front along Nutting Road. Not all lots that are in the zone two have septics in the zone two, so not all lots that are in the zone two are necessarily restricted. It's just the lots that have a septic system that's located within that zone two. And previously, that was four lots. Working with the Board of Health to update the nitrogen loading permits, it's just a way to ensure that there's a restriction on the number of bedrooms. They put a restriction on the open space, which kind of mimics the conservation restriction that this board put in place. That demonstrates that they have adequate room to support the bedroom counts on these lots, which they do have that capability to do. So, this is, again, housekeeping because we're updating those four lots, and in turn, actually, one of the lots, the septic got removed from the zone two, so it's actually only three lots now. And this revision to the covenant clarifies that. And one lot, it was determined that it was not a five-bedroom, it was actually a six-bedroom, so there was updating some of the information for that. We do have Board of Health approvals, they've issued the permits, or they're in the process of issuing the permits. We did include correspondence in your packet from the Board of Health, clarifying that or noting that. And our goal is to just get this covenant updated with the board, so that when we do record all of the updated legal documents, we can update them all together with the Board of Health legal documents.
All right, great, thank you. I'll go to the board with any questions, unless, Joe, do you have anything to add?
No, just overall that it is a reduction of the number of bedrooms under this restriction, so.
Seems to be.
Bless her ask.
Uh, Bob?
No.
Go ahead, go, go, sorry.
Pretty straightforward.
All right, so, we, can I get a motion to amend the declaration of covenants and restrictions on, to reflect a new nitrogen restriction and easement for PB 121923, Wendell Place?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a presentation from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for having us. For having the opportunity to speak, receive. I'm Tom Teller, I'm on the, member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, with me is.
Beth Parkins.
And?
Mike Berlinski.
Yeah. Okay, so, I believe that the presentation was in your packets.
It wasn't.
And so, I don't want to just belabor those points. I would, I think it would be useful to review some pertinent points that are in the presentation, and then provide plenty of time for questions and answers. So, the background of CESC and the climate roadmap, I don't think we need to belabor that. It is, was an action of the town meeting in October of 2020 to initiate these measures, and the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee was formed as a result of that. Next, Joe?
We're on the way.
Yep. So, the question is, why should we adopt the specialized code? And I think the key reason is that commitment to environmental sustainability and climate action is one of the seven outcome areas in the town strategic plan. And this is consistent with that and is expressly meant to, to address that. It is a key step of our Westford climate roadmap. The buildings constitute 58% of carbon emissions for the town, and of course, the most effective way to, to be able to address the emissions that come from the building sector are by code changes that impact future buildings. Of the, the code, the entire specialized code emphasizes energy savings and load reduction rather than other measures. And we think that's important, both because of the principal impact of that, but also because of challenges to the grid in our town which have recently come to light. And so, these, the specialized code is well aligned with that. Next, Joe? So, I don't think I need to rehearse any of this, but the specialized code constitutes the last, the top of the pyramid. The base code, which is shared by, you know, all jurisdictions, does have Massachusetts amendments, and that's applicable to the entire town, the entire state. The stretch code is applicable to the hundreds of Massachusetts communities which are currently clean energy communities. And then, the specialized code is one which would apply to communities that opt into that code. A formative action by the town is required in order to implement that. That's been taken by 48 communities so far, cities and towns in the, in the Commonwealth. This is an eye chart, this is just to see whether, how good the new monitors are, which is, they're pretty good. But, one reason for putting that up is to note that, among the towns, the 48 jurisdictions that have adopted the specialized code are many of our neighbors, Jumpserd, Carlisle, Hackton, Bedford, and other names that I think you can see there. A few fun facts?
Fast facts.
Fast facts. No, I think that's more. Not too fun. But, fast, fast facts. The first is that the specialized code would apply to new construction only. So, renovations or additions, however significant, obviously, if it's a significant renovation or addition, that would fall into the jurisdiction of the stretch code, and those measures would have to be met, but the specialized code applies only to new construction. For all electric homes, there are no differences between the stretch code now in effect and the specialized code. And that's meant to encourage all electric construction. And that also doesn't make any changes to what is in the current code as far as EV charging. The third is that there are available rebates and incentives for mass save, there are also some 45L tax credits currently available, which are incentives for energy efficient construction to help to defray some of those costs. Over on the right side, for multifamily, which is, I think, of particular interest to us because of our desire to implement projects that are, that are in the MBTA's overlay district, those require passive house, which is an exemplary standard, and passive house is extremely energy efficient construction. The specialized code does not prohibit mixed fuels, it does impose some offsetting requirements, which is something I think this board is used to dealing with. If you choose to build a mixed fuel building, it does require pre-wiring for electrification, so for each appliance that is powered by fossil fuel, for example, if there's a natural gas furnace, the wiring has to be in place so that an electrical alternative, heat pumps, could be installed without having to tear the walls apart. And that's, we see as a consumer protection measure. And onsite solar is also built into the requirements for mixed fuel to offset some of those fossil fuel utilizations. Next. For new residential buildings, the specialized code, again, only applies to new buildings, all electric, again, no new requirements. Because a question has come up in some of our other meetings, it's important to note that the specialized code does allow for backup generators for an all-electric house to improve resilience. For multi-fuel buildings, as noted, pre-wiring and solar, there is a distinction between homes that are large homes, over 4,000 square feet, where the amount of solar required is enough to offset the fossil fuel use, in terms of a direct offset. For smaller homes, there is, there are modest requirements, both of those solar requirements are subject to site issues. If there, the code does not require, for example, any cutting of trees or anything, if the, if the site is shaded, or if the orientation of the house is, is outside of reasonable limits.
Tom, it says appliances, what about vehicles in like a garage? Do you, is it required to pre-wire for electric vehicles?
That's required in the stretch code.
It's in the stretch, okay.
That's already.
There's no change for the specialized code. Okay. For new commercial buildings, and this also, next, Joe? Also, it would apply to municipal buildings, including schools, it's similar for all electric, there is no additional requirement for mixed fuel, pre-wiring, and rooftop solar. I would also note that the current Westford guidelines for municipal buildings, which have been adopted by the town, meet the requirements of the specialized code, so there would be no changes to the, to the Westford guidelines required. Estimated increases in residential construction costs, these figures are from MassDOER, who has provided some studies of this information. For electric, of course, there's, there's no changes, for renovations, there are no changes. For a large, single-family, mixed fuel, more than 4,000 square feet, they estimated that the additional cost would be $24,000 after incentives, and with an annual energy savings of about $2,273. For a single-family, mixed fuel, less than 4,000 square feet, that's somewhat smaller, $13,446 after incentives with somewhat reduced annual energy savings. I would note that those upfront costs include the cost of solar, there are other options for adding solar, you know, leased solar with a power purchase agreement and so forth, but those would be the cost as they are. And their estimate is that for all buildings, there would be less than 2% increased construction cost, offset, of course, by potential energy savings. For large apartments, next, Joe? Or condos, 12,000 square feet or larger, they are required to meet passive house. Under the stretch code, there are three compliance pathways, there are provided a targeted pathway, an ERI pathway, or HERS pathway, or passive house. The specialized code simplifies that, if you will, and says, no, it's got to be passive house. And the only additional requirement is for mixed fuel, pre-wiring again for future electrification, as with the others. Passive house is, of course, a very focused energy standard that is intended to significantly reduce energy use, and while preserving a very comfortable and healthy living environment. We have a little bit more about passive house. Estimates are provided by DOER, and also, I think, by Passive House Institute. It is that heating loads can be reduced by as much as 90%, and total energy used by about 60%. I would note that one of the other pathways that's available under current code is the ERI or HERS pathway, you know, building the house to meet a HERS requirement. HERS is an annual energy rating, so it doesn't really address peak loads. Passive house specifically addresses peak loads. And so, one of the big benefits of passive house is that it does significantly reduce peak loads on the net, on the, on the grid. And other studies have shown that. Ah, yeah. Okay. I didn't even notice that, I guess I need to wake up. Yeah, I'm trying to, I have notes here.
I'm a sports mom.
Except they're all on the same channel.
I know.
There are significant improvements in indoor air quality with the passive house. And it's been shown that passive house construction can maintain temperatures much better. If there is a power outage, they cool off much more slowly in colder temperatures, and they heat up much more slowly during summertime temperatures. Okay, now we can both. It's scaling fast, this is a report of what's currently happening in the Commonwealth. And the, as you can see from this curve, the number of projects that are being built or planned under passive house is increasing fairly strongly. And, of course, it doesn't, it looks like the peak tails off, but I think that's more planning horizon than there is a decrease in actual interest in the passive house. And it's notable that a third of the projects are low-income projects.
It'd be interesting to see that with a percentage of the total new construction. I think it might explain that tailing off better, to see if.
Yes.
A percentage of all projects are passive, are now passive houses for multifamily construction.
I don't have those figures.
Yeah.
They're probably available, but I don't have those figures in front of me. The, this is an example of a current project in Lowell. It's affordable housing in passive house as well, and this project represents those same benefits of passive house. It's an earlier slide. Passive house and costs. I, I have to admit that, that there's, there's, seems to be a dichotomy between, you know, what the lion's share of the evidence that we're looking at and a couple of outliers. But DOER has the state authority on these matters, and we have a sampling of the communities that they have in their data, but there are three or four times as many communities in their, in their sampling. Estimates that there's a 1% to 4% increase in construction cost for passive house, and that's before incentives. And so, incentives can help, help to reduce that. And it also includes both mixed fuel and all-electric, because passive house doesn't require all-electric construction. You can build passive house with mixed fuel, the emphasis is on energy reduction, rather than a specific way of providing that energy to the systems in the, in the home. So, 1% to 4%, and I think the 4% is generous. This is an updated slide, and like many updated slides, it raises some questions as well as answering some, but the, the stretch code and specialized appendices to the stretch code were recently updated, two weeks ago, February 14th, Happy Valentine's Day to the Commonwealth, with a significant relaxation of some of the requirements for standards and so forth, and announced new passive house incentives available for mass save. Now, if you add up the stuff on the, in the green box.
Well, it has to come up a little.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And the stuff on the right, those, those numbers don't tally. And it's, and I tried to get a more definitive answer to this, but the figures on the left are both pre-construction feasibility type that are for this, the project rather than a unit. And the energy modeling is an allowance per unit that may or may not be used. And the $750 is, is an allowance for pre-certification, and then up to $3,000 for certification. And the sum of those is more than $3,750, $3,750 seems to be the allowance per unit. And I wish I had a better answer for that, but, but I don't. Again, this is a very new change. So, I did attend the briefing on the new change, and they buzzed right by that. And so, why should Westford's DOTs the specialized code? Again, it's part of our, it's a major part of our strategic plan. It is in step with the climate roadmap, noting that buildings are our largest source of emission, and code is the way that we have to address that. And I would also note that it requires passive house for those large projects. We have all been very recently brought up short by National Grid telling us that they don't have power, at least in some parts of the town. And that's a serious issue, that's a serious issue that predates specialized code, that predates stretch code, that's a serious issue. And we strongly support the town's efforts to secure assistance in performing the studies that allow us to fully understand that, and then to make plans to mitigate that. Passive house itself is, we think, a real potential mitigation to some of these issues. And I would just offer one data point, the HERS rating, and I, I think HERS rating is, I don't have to explain what that is. Yeah. So, the HERS rating requirements for the stretch code, or for the specialized code, are between 42 and 45 for certain applications, and other things like accessory blowing units, it's a little bit higher than that. But the strictest requirement under the specialized code is a HERS 42 rating, which is a very efficient, again, that's an annual rating, but that's a very efficient rating. Passive house is estimated as, when annualized, as a 34, HERS 34. So, it's a sub, a very substantial reduction in the energy usage of those projects. And we have a last slide on the grid. This is, again, a DOER slide. And, but it has pertinent information. The, their studies found that the specialized code does not increase the load nor the peak load for most building types. That's not necessarily a comfort to us when we have a circuit that seems to be saturated in a zone of importance for the town. But, you know, there you have it. Across Massachusetts, they predict about a 5% increase in peak electric. For that's, those really derive from the stretch code now in effect rather than the specialized code.
Are there any measures that could mitigate that 5% peak increase?
Yeah, I think the specialized code.
Well, I mean.
Well, that slide, I think, is though, elect, it's, the question is, what happens to the grid when we electrify everything? So, that would be the effect of all of our building codes. I mean, I.
That wasn't clear to me there. It was reading to me like specialized code could result in 5% at peak, but overall reduction.
I know. It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect slide.
No. And that'll teach me for reusing DOER sites, I guess.
What is the DOER?
Department of Energy Resources.
So, this is all the state providing this information?
It is the state providing the information. And the other big change, which I'm sure you're aware of, but DOER has jurisdiction over the energy codes, which are distinct from the building codes. The 10th edition is, of course, now out, 78 CMR. And that's still under the jurisdiction of the, I can't remember all the letters, building.
And when does this, the, the article, has this going into effect when?
The, the, the date on the art, on Article 20 right now is for it to go into effect on July 1st of 2026, about a year and three or four months from now.
Go ahead.
In the course of the discussions around this, has there been any feedback asked for or provided by some of the developers in town, some of the larger developers, on what they would actually do in the case that this was to be passed and that this was the building code? Because I think the question has been answered, what the increase in cost would be in a mixed fuel home? But practically speaking, if I'm a developer, right, and, and these are the standards and I'm trying to build 18 homes, I think I'm not probably going to plan for mixed use unless I have buyers coming to me early in the process who want that. I'm probably going to only build to meet the code standard. And what, I guess one thing that comes to my mind is, doesn't this come across as a, I guess, a reduction in choice to potential home consumers where they now only have the choice of a fully electrified home? So, what happens if someone buys a home that's built to the new standard? It's all electric and they wanted to, you know, bring in a different fuel for one of the appliance, the major appliances in their home? Is that allowed under this code or would that not be permitted?
I think that would be a question would have to be asked by the building commission or not by.
I didn't get what you were saying. Were you saying that the house is already built, so it would be a renovation? Or it's a brand-new house?
So, I'm, I'm a developer and it's 2027 and this code is in place. And I'm going to build 18 homes, but I only have two people who want homes and one wants mixed, mixed fuel and one is finding all-electric. Strategically, I'm probably not going to build many mixed-fuel homes because that's going to ultimately arrive at a higher price point, like, I think 24,000 was the number I saw. So, I'm probably going to build all-electric homes. If then down the road I market these homes, there could be somebody who's like, I love the house, but I wish I could have a gas stove or I wish I could have a gas dryer, whatever. I guess I have two questions. Well, one, just philosophically, doesn't this limit consumer choice? Because now it's like harder to find a mixed-fuel home in Westford, right? That's kind of a philosophical question. I don't necessarily need an answer to that. But more importantly, if I then buy this all-electric home and I want gas for my, for my stove, let's say, am I allowed to then, like, install a propane tank myself so that I can have a gas stove? Or is that then forbidden by the code? Or is, is it not clear what the code would allow in that case?
I would build, I would, I would answer that partly by, we posed the question about fireplace and wood stove.
Yep.
Which is different, but along the same lines.
Yeah.
And the answer that we got to those specific questions was, if that homeowner wanted to add mixed fuel to that home design.
Yeah.
That would put the building into mixed-fuel category.
Ah, okay.
And so, to do that, they would have to make sure that the pre-wiring was in place.
Yeah.
And the requisite amount of solar, as best, depending on the, on the size of the home, was provided onsite. If they could do that. The other homes would not need to do that. They would obviously be wired for electric. They would not be required to provide onsite solar.
Right, okay.
But I think it's, there's an 18-house subdivision and House 9, right in the middle of that, wants gas.
Yep. The logistics of that are almost impossible.
You still have to get gas from the other, into the development to that property where they can tap into it. So, that's. A large multifamily.
Yeah.
If you want a gas stove, which was be, my first thing I'd want is a gas stove.
Right.
It's not easy to put gas in, in a large multifamily unless it's already been pre-plumbed.
Exactly.
So, yes. It's the other way around they have it. So, if you have, if you meet the stretch code, right, if you have a mixed, if you build a mixed-use.
Mixed fuel.
Mixed fuel. You have to put in the plumbing for going to all-electric at some point.
Yep.
Yes.
Whereas if the other way around, it's not required.
Right, right.
The other thing, following up, Mike, on your question about 1 July 2026. As I asked Jeff this afternoon, how would that apply with some of these MBTA projects that are starting to come forth? And that's, it's not, that's anything that apply for a site plan review prior to that. That's not the critical point. It's the bill, when they apply for a building permit. Building permit, if it were to occur after that date, require that they comply if this were to pass at town meeting. Or unless they volunteer to comply on their own.
To answer your question, I did speak to several builders and they felt that this would be a detriment to affordable housing. Right down the cost, increased cost of construction. Now, they have some numbers in here, again, that came from the state. And a lot of those numbers consider the mass save incentives. Well, if you heard on the radio lately about the gas bills have gone up so much because their mass save is out of money. And so, they, money comes from utility bills to fund mass save to give the incentives. And, yeah, so now that's why the bills have gone up so much.
Could I just clarify, you're on mass save? Because I don't, with all respect, I don't think it would be fair to say they were not funded. They were, for every three years, they propose a budget for the next three years. And they proposed a budget of five billion dollars, right? So, as you know, legislature, governor are all upset about the high energy prices and the increases on fees. So, they dropped them down for the next three years. They dropped the budget down to 4.5 billion. They still, their budget for the previous three years was four billion. So, they still have a 12% increase to their budget for the next three years. But they didn't get the full amount that they were looking for. So, you know, we, you know, we feel comfortable with the incentive programs that are listed in this document.
Yep.
But, yeah, they got a lower increase than they had asked for, for the next three-year plan.
Right, well, thank you for that clarification.
I would also note that DPU is mandated and the different large utilities are putting their plans in place. But they have mandated that the utility publisher rate for homes that are heated with electricity, in other words, heat pumps, that would be a lower rate. And that lower rate would be on the delivery charge, not the supply charge, during the winter cold weather months. That, that homes that were heated with heat pumps would, would have a reduced rate. So, that's also some small mitigation.
I just think for the viewing audience as well, maybe it'd be good if we could get in the habit of calling out acronyms the first time. Not everyone is familiar with every acronym we've thrown out there, so.
Point well taken, yes.
Yeah.
All right, Joni, you have anything?
Yeah, I, the one thing I, I would like to add is, from the affordable housing perspective, we, we, I personally have looked at this a lot. And I, although I know there is an increased cost to developers, which is a problem, there is also, if we do go to passive house, a reduction to the occupants in energy cost, which is also a very big concern that we're starting to see in affordable housing.
Yeah.
Even though, you know, folks inaffordables can't afford the utility bills. So, something, you know, just to keep in mind, it's a pro for it as opposed to a con.
Well, I think the other thing to keep in mind, though, is we're going through sticker shock the past three or four months here with these delivery charges that are just skyrocketing. So, I think unfortunately, the numbers that are in here are based on prior year data in terms of fuel delivery charges and, and supply costs. So, unfortunately, I'm not sure these numbers hold in the current model we're in. So, there needs to be something done to address that. I'm hoping that this is just a temporary blip, but.
But in the face of increasing energy costs, the, the objective to lower overall energy, whether it be natural gas, whether it be electricity or propane, if we put in that super-good envelope like passive house, we're going to bring those costs down, you'd have additional savings.
But there are people right now who are dropping their electric or natural gas usage and going with pellet stoves because they don't have that same increase in delivery charges that we're seeing for the other fuels. So, that's my only point. You know, both electric and natural gas, we've all seen our bills.
Right.
Both had very large increases in delivery charges, probably pretty equivalent. So, it's, it's a trade-off, so.
Don't. A question that's not maybe directly relevant, but I'm just wondering because you folks are so much closer to this topic than I am. So, is the state doing anything or can Westford do anything around the cleanliness of the energy that we're sourcing from National Grid or the other sources, right? Because, you know, I think we think about electricity as this clean option, but at the end of the day, the energy is being produced somewhere and, and there are cleaner methods to produce that energy than others. Is that something that has come up in your research at all in terms of like?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it's huge.
So, what is, what are the mechanisms that like Westford has or the state has to sort of?
There are state, state rules on the content of the delivery and it's subject, all providers are subject to these rules. So, that the different classes of different categories, and it's complex, in the renewable portfolio standard in the Commonwealth. Right now, it adds up to about 57% of the power is classed as renewable.
Okay.
That includes Class 1, the best, Class 2, not quite as great, you know, Class 2 from refuse, which would be, you know, like the incinerator. All the renewables is 57%. And that's mandated to go up 2% to 3% per year to 2040, when the Class 1 requirement will be at 40%. Yeah, 2040, when it will be at 20. The other thing I have to say is, Westford's municipal and residents and businesses can participate in Westford POP. And Westford POP, the standard default is plus 10% over those. So, that would, that would put you at 67%. And there is a 100% option.
Okay.
And of course, folks who have solar on the roof or who participate in community solar.
Yep.
Also are buying through the renewable energy credits system a, a cleaner supply than the state prevailing, but.
Thank you for that.
So, the grid is getting greener.
Yep.
Like any other big project, it can't get instantly greener.
Great, thank you.
Joni, you have anything?
No, I guess, who came up with the definition of the specialized code? Was that done at the state level?
Yes, the specialized code was set by, again, by DOER, which has jurisdiction for the energy code. So, both the stretch code, which is a challenge, and the specialized code, those, those were authored by DOER. It was a very extensive hearing process, but those are from the state Department of Energy Resources.
Thanks. I had one minor point, Tom, in the briefing between Slide 7 and 9. In Slide 7, you mentioned the square foot area for a large house. And then you reference a large house on Slide 9. It'd be nice if you kind of defined large to be this so that when you get later in the briefing, especially, I'm assuming this briefing is going to go up on the town website before town meeting.
Yeah.
Just mention that.
That's a very good point, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your presentation. All right.
Thank you.
And of course, if you have questions later, we're always happy to help.
Great.
Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, general business item C, review of annual town meeting board to discuss whether to take positions on any articles. We did have correspondence from a resident concerning Article 16, the select board to accept easements of the Stony Bridge project. I will say that I don't know that it's appropriate for us to take a position in this article since it's a scenic road and that will come before us. You know, if, if this is, if this is voted in. I don't know if the board has any thoughts on that.
What, what is the concern of that resident? I didn't see the other question was to, for us to take a position.
You could, yeah, if you want to get up and speak, yeah, give me a minute.
I'm the resident, if you have any questions.
Okay, great. If you want to just give your name and address and.
I'm Joni, I'm on Stony Brook Road.
So, what are your concerns with the project?
I brought it to you because it's a scenic road. And I'm under the impression, reading the scenic roads bylaw, that you would have heard about that.
So, we don't have, we don't have jurisdiction on anything until it's been approved by town meeting.
Okay, so, the letter that you wrote that, I think you sent it and you false stare at response. That town meeting has approved this twice. What happens is, every time nobody says anything, those votes get cited as reason to continue forward. I bet if you asked 100 citizens that what they voted on at town meeting, no one would know that they approved two pieces of this. Because one of them was within 22 other line items, was one article out of, you know, 20 odd articles at town meeting. So, if you just let it go, it, it becomes a snowball. So, maybe it's later. I'm happy to come back here a little bit. But at the end of the day, there's a scenic road with a mattress-resistant, sport-protected bridge. And the response back keeps coming, well, it's not safe. But in 2020, I have the.
Okay, so, you know what, this isn't right for us to discuss now. And I think you're doing the right thing by bringing it to board's attention because some of us didn't have any idea of the concerns here. So, I think you're, you're doing that, but I don't think it's right for us to discuss it.
Today, or whenever.
No, 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 if this gets approved and comes back before us, absolutely, we, we need to discuss it.
So, I don't know if this helps, but I, my limited understanding is that the design is not yet at 100%. It would be, I think, premature to apply for a scenic road permit if the project is not fully designed. Like, if there are changes between whatever percent they're at now in the end, then that could require them to refile again for a similar permit.
So, again, I think you do, you're getting your.
They keep saying, no, thanks, we're good. It's, it's going to be as it is. Yet, because it's not safe, yet the analysis of the bridge says it is in, all primary structural elements are sound. So, you know, it's a little bit of a conflict.
Sure.
It's not, and it, do you know where the bridge is?
Of course I do.
Okay. So, there's no truck traffic that goes through because there's an eight-foot train bridge.
I'm well aware of that, yep.
So, what would you recommend?
So, I would recommend that you keep doing what you're doing and, and get to before boards and get to town meeting and voice your concerns. I mean, it's, it's, you have an opinion and it's a valid opinion. We just can't act on it at this point. It's not, nothing, we have no jurisdiction, there's nothing we can do.
So, even though it's a scenic road.
It's, but it's not bef, it's got to go properly before us. So. So, yeah, I do, you don't get talk to Western cats, see if you can get them to broadcast your your information. Just come before boards and give presentations, just like you're doing now. All right. Thank you. Uh, we have Article nineteen. And if you folks think there's anything else that we should be talking about, please let me know. But I think we should vote to update the flood plan by law since it's our.
We agree. We did kind of really already.
They already did, no, all right. Uh, there was some stuff in yellow, was there any purpose?
Just have the least warrant was. Get together, I'm not sure why, because it could be. Other eligible expenses made at all, this one, are not totally positive on this particular one.
I think I think when watching one of the select board meetings, a resident noted that in the past, some expenses had been used for more than simply roadway maintenance. And so this was to clarify that there are for other, there are other purposes that fall into that category. And so I don't know that this is the the final language, but I I think it has to do with that so that it was clear that it was more than simply maintenance of the existing roadway. But we can ask further.
So so can I ask, so on things where there's Xs, I assume numbers are going to be filled in there. Is that correct, like in Article six?
Yeah, so typically, what, yes, so the the math will get finalized, there are still some.
At particular one, they're actually going to ask to dismiss because the bids came in and it fell within budget, so. Was a placeholder in time where they were going to see how the bids came in and what the delta may be, but they actually came within budget, so. So tell me to dismiss this article.
I'm amazed that it's one point six million for a feasibility study for Robinson School. Doesn't that seem crazy amount of money to you?
Yes, it's not not rebuilding the school.
Can I also ask on Article four, is there going to be any dollar value in there? What do you mean energy efficiency projects?
I believe perhaps in the, I don't know if we have the motions document. I thought there was a specified dollar amount. Not sure if it was. Two hundred thousand, I'm not sure. I don't want to throw a bad number up there.
It was two hundred thousand.
Okay, we have like an all star audience here today, so this is great, thank you.
All of which comes from monies that have already been received from grants, and this would facilitate one of this having our role. Facilitate being able to do that.
So anything else we want to discuss? You good? All right, so review of draft minutes, motion to review the draft minutes for January twenty first twenty five and February third, twenty twenty five?
So what?
Motion to approve. Second. All right, any discussion? Bob?
No.
Joan?
No.
Joan?
No.
Darren?
Comments?
All those in favor say, all right, do we whether to do individual, we can do both, right?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we do have correspondence from the wonderful folks in Groton about their ADUs. Bylaw amendment for accessory dwelling units, if you're interested. Do we have anything else? All right, motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.